Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Git Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Git Oiling Greg Kilwain. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad to hear you again today.
We are, we're also really excited that Julie and Colin have joined us here today. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How's it going everyone?
So today we have a really exciting call. We have a lot to get into here today. If you were around last week, you may have heard that we have a brand new tool in Git Oiling that will allow you to set up your website in just a few clicks and a few little motions of your fingers on the keyboard, really just a couple of minutes and you can be well on your way to a website you will be proud to share. Now, I should put this caveat here. When you get started with Git Oiling, all you have to do is put in your Young Living member number and you instantly have a website that you can start sharing. And that is for you as a brand partner. That is the website that helps you to share Young Living directly. But if you've been around here for long, you know that there is a more effective way to go about putting yourself out there to the world so that people are attracted to what you have to say and are thus open to hearing about Young Living from you. And the way to get that done where a website is concerned is with one that is personal. It is yours, it speaks to your story, your experience, what you bring to the table. And ultimately, that's what's going to play a role in building trust that has people open to those Young Living conversations in the first place. And the trouble is, is when it's time to build a personalized website that is yours, a lot of us just get stuck in our tracks, right? Like we, we see a blank screen and we go, uh, what do we do? And this tool completely solves that problem. We're going to plug in a couple of colors, plug in a couple of fonts, we're going to tell it a little bit about us. And in just a few seconds, you're going to have the starting point for a gorgeous done-for-you-all-ready-to-go website. And I'm going to show you today how to follow this entire process, all the way through to making some tweaks, to really making it your own. And again, you can have this whole thing done in just a few minutes. So got a lot to get into here today, really excited about this. Say hello in the chat, let us know where you're coming in from. We're thrilled to have you here. We are for brand partners all over the world. We have a way for you to grow your business here, whether that is just Young Living or you've got other stuff that you do. So we're going to pop out of our video and get into this content that we have put together for you here today, which again, just thrilled to have you. Welcome from all over, you guys. Really looking forward to getting into this with you here. All right, here's my slides. Okay, perfect. All right. So welcome. Today, we're going to talk about how you can get your personal branded Young Living website ready, something that you can get done in just a few minutes with this brand new quick setup tool that Greg released last week. So today, we're going to talk about how we can create a couple of simple brand assets. And we're going to be using Canva for this, and you can use the free version of Canva for this. And I have provided for you some templates, and I'll show you where to find those in just a minute. We're going to go in and just make a couple of modifications to those for our logo, photos, backgrounds, et cetera, just basically a couple of things you want to bring to a website to really make it your own. And then I'm going to walk through how you can plug these in and launch your full website using the quick setup feature in Git Oiling. We're going to talk about how you can update the words or copy on your website, the visuals, and of course, the layout, and share some tips for building a website that builds trust and drives growth in your Young Living business. So if you have questions, please do go ahead and add those to the Q and A. This is a call that we offer every week, every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. And this is for you if you are a Young Living brand partner. If you're looking for help with any topic, whether it pertains to today's topic or not, you are more than welcome to add those to the Q and A here live on this free call. Now, if you would like to watch us in the future live, join us here on these calls, and you are actually watching this as a replay, head over to gitoyling.com/weeklyworksession right now. Get on the list and be on the calls like these where you can meet these amazing people who are part of your community and learn about features in Git Oiling that can help you grow. And if you would like to work together, as we will be working together today with Reverend Paula, if you have something you'd like to work on together for your website or any other part of your Git Oiling system, follow this link here and you can reserve a spot on an upcoming call where we work together. And finally, if you would like for someone to get the work done for you, we've got a team, they are talented, and they are ready to help you. Go to gitoyling.com/conceiers and you can learn more about what they can do for you. All right. So let's talk about quick setup. This is a brand new menu item under your website and blog menu in Git Oiling. And here you will find just a couple of quick prompts and places to insert some colors, fonts, and photos, and you will be well on your way. The cool thing about this is, is that you don't need to hire a designer to look polished online and to have something that is branded to you and not just something that is for sharing Young Living. Your website is what allows you to build that credibility with your leads and your customers so that more people are more open to saying yes to the events that you host or to the conversations that you would like to have that lead toward new customers for Young Living, right? Now, this quick setup is going to get you up and running in just a few minutes. And with the done-for-you Canva templates, we're going to make this process really simple and easy and maybe even a little fun. So today, we're going to create a basic brand kit that includes a logo, a profile photo, some background images for our website, a social sharing image, and we will go through our quick setup for our website. That's our homepage, about me page, products and services page, and a link in bio page. You guys, all of this, you put your info on one form and you get all of these pages done, which is wild. We're going to see how that works here in just a minute. I want to go through some best practices first, just so we are clear on sort of what we need to do before we get started. And sort of, you know, if you're, if you've never had a website before, or you're unclear of what you might need to have or do to do this right, let's go through this real quick. First and foremost, you want to pick one to two fonts that match your style. And I want to encourage you to prioritize legibility over fanciness, right? You might see something and think it's super cute. That is typically going to be best for an accent, right? It's not going to be one of the fonts you pick for your website setup. So I really like Google fonts for this. The best thing about using Google fonts is that they are free for you to use. You do not have to buy a license to use them. We will show you, of course, how you can use those in the quick setup feature. And then I want you to consider picking two to three, maximum five, colors that you use consistently throughout your website. And these need to, these need to flow nicely together, right? You don't want your website to be visually really busy or visually distracting. The most important thing on your website are the words on the page that connect with the person who's there to read them. And if we've got a lot of other stuff going on and it's too loud and too noisy for our eyes, I know that sounds weird to say, but you know what it looks like when you see something really busy. It's kind of hard to pay attention to what's being said, right? So we want to really create an environment that allows people to focus on what's being said. So stick with two to three consistent colors. I like using neutral palettes or going with a black and white, so white background, black font, and choosing a couple of bold colors, bold contrasting colors that you can use to sort of punctuate, right? Use that for a button or for a background here or there. We want to also lead with a clear statement of what we do. And it's very important that when we talk about what we do on our personal website, that we are not putting Young Living first. Young Living is the secret to why your life is awesome. But in order for people to care about what that is, they need to know that your life is awesome first, right? So we need to talk about what it is that we do and who we help. And it needs to be in a way that doesn't center Young Living at the outset, right? And then you want to consider using some bold button colors that grab attention. Again, from that color palette, you want to maybe have one color that is particularly bold. And then you want to make sure that as we are building out what we're saying on these website pages, that we are favoring making shorter statements and embracing having more sections. Essentially, what we're doing here is if you could imagine writing a paragraph, right? And if you, you know, obviously, we all went to school. When you're taught to write a paragraph, you might have four, five, six sentences in one block, right? And that is fine in an academic setting. On a website, you are typically much better off, or not just on a website, in your emails, on your blog posts, anywhere that you are writing to be read online, it is better for you to speak in short statements and have some space, hit enter a couple of times, right? Or add a new section in between, because that's going to draw the eye to the next thing that you're saying and keep people scrolling down the page to read more. So if you have a lot to say, always remember that it's best to break that up, either with space in between the statements that you're saying or in separate sections. And again, I'll show you what that looks like here in just a bit. Now, if you need some help getting this figured out, I have a brand guideline template. This is for Canva that you are welcome to use. You plug in your colors in here, you select your, your fonts, and you pop them in here. And then any visual elements that you use, you can also add your logos to this as well. Highly recommend you keep this as a document. And of course, if you create one of these, you have an idea of what you'd like, you can take this to our team, for example, and they can go set things up for you if that is something you're interested in. Now, let's talk a little bit more about customization and how we grow with this before we go get into it. What you need to know first is that this quick setup is going to give you a really strong foundation really quickly, right? It's going to give you exactly what you need to work with. It's not going to be 100% done as soon as it's generated. You are going to want to go in and make some modifications. But this is the absolute best tool I have seen yet that will allow you to get what you need in the right places so that you can just go in and make tweaks, right? You're not going to be staring at a white blank screen trying to figure out what you do next. All you have to do is go in and make what's there your own. And gosh, isn't that so much easier, right? So you can tweak that text, the colors and the sections anytime. It's just going to shorten the length of this project for you, right? Using this tool. And of course, you can add your opt-ins, booking links, other page features that you may be using. You could also add those in in the future if you're new to Git Oiling or not using those features yet. And then, of course, as should be the case with any tool you use, with Git Oiling, your site can grow with your business. Start with where you are. If you know that you're somebody that would eventually like to get certified in Aroma Freedom Technique, but you're not yet, don't worry about it. You can add that to your site later. You want to create a funnel to collect leads, but you don't have one yet, don't worry about it. You can do that later. All of this can plug in when you're ready. So don't ever think that you have to have the most, you know, perfect finished iteration of all of this for you to succeed. It really is about progress over perfection. All right. So what we're going to do next are use these Canva templates to build out our brand kit and some other assets for our website. Then we're going to run through that quick setup with these, these assets that we create. And then we'll edit and update the new website and we can start sharing to grow our business. And of course, please make sure that you are subscribed to us. You're getting these emails about these calls so that you can be back here every week to get help with whatever it is that you're working on and learn new ways to grow your brand and business with Git Oiling. All right. So let's go and see this in action. So first things first, I am going to open up a blog post that you guys will have had sent to your email. And of course, I just had that open and now I can't find it. Do you guys have that? Can we pop that in here real quick? And I will, um, I'll open it up. I was doing some edits on it right before we, we hopped on this call here today. All right, let me see. Tell you what. Team, do you have that? Why can I not find it?
Sorry, Ashley, you're needing the blog, right?
Yes, the blog. Yeah, that blog post link that we were working on earlier. Sorry. Yes, please. Yeah, thank you. All right. Really quickly, while, before we get to that point, this is a new account in Git Oiling. So I'm going to show you what this is going to look like for you here today. If you've never done this before, know that if you already have a Git Oiling account, you can do this as well. It is going to make a couple of modifications for you and you can kind of choose what that looks like moving forward, right? So like how, how you want your menu to show up if you have something already, whether or not you want to swap one page for another, et cetera. All right. Thank you so much for that, Colin. This is the blog post that you guys should have received in your email earlier here today. This is also where you'll find the replay for this call. So right here, we have our Canva templates. You can see right here. The first one is a brand guideline. The next one, we have a logo. And all of these are already preset size-wise for their use cases, right? And you don't have to have all of these done at the outset. I just think that these are all generally really helpful. So you're going to be able to see that we have a template for you. You're going to click use template for new design, starting with this brand guideline here. Once you have a logo, you can add them here to this page, right? I'm going to put in my month and year here. This is May 2025. And I can go in and start selecting my colors and my fonts. Just a quick tip here, when you're looking for fonts in Canva, you may find that these are actually fonts that you have to purchase, right? So always be kind of mindful of what that looks like. If you want to like actually publish them on your website, you want to make sure that you have license to use them. And if they are Google fonts, then you're going to get those. And actually, a quick, if we go to the quick setup tool real quick, I'll show you one of the very cool things that, that we have included here is sort of an update to our system, is that when we go here to click change font, you can actually browse different types of font here. So if we want to look at handwriting fonts that we want to maybe use for some, you know, accents or headlines or something like that. Or if you're interested in serif fonts, some of these classic fonts like this, or if you want to look for sans serif, et cetera, right? So you can actually find hundreds, if not thousands, I don't know, there's so many fonts in here. So pick the ones that really speak to you. You may need to upload them to Canva, or, you know, or vice versa, you can upload them to your Git Oiling account if you have something that is a bit, you know, more custom, right? But coming back over here, I know that I would like to use as my accent typeface, I'm going to use a font called Playfair Display, which is a Google font. So I'm going to come over here and I'm going to search for that. I don't know if it's here yet. Here's Playfair Display. And I'm going to type that in here. Great. I am also going to use Railway, which is a Google font as well. Let's actually Git Oiling's primary font. Here is Railway. And I'm going to type in the name of it here. And my primary typeface, I will also use Railway for that. Okay. So but this one, I'm going to make bold. Okay. Okay. The next part, which I think is quite fun, is setting up our colors. Let me show you a website real quick that I learned about from a member of our community named Katinka that did a, a training for us a number of years ago. If you go to coolers.co, L O R S dot C O, you can scroll through loads of color palettes, right? So I'm going to just go here, start the generator. And just hit the spacebar and you will generate random palettes. So here's one. I actually kind of love this. This is really cool. So I am going to, I'm going to copy this, this color. I'm going to come over here to my brand kit. I'm going to swap this color out. I'm going to type that in. There you go. There it is. And I'm also going to type it in right down here. So it's easy for me to find. So I'm going to paste that there. And I'll go back right over here. I'll get the next one. And I'll, again, just follow this process of copy and paste, pop it right down here, swap the color in the palette here. Okay, come on. There we go. Great. Love this purple. This purple is the reason why I think I chose this, or the combination of the purple and this sort of burgundy color. I like these a lot. I will come back again, repeating this process. Change the color of the image. Swap out the text here so that you have that as well. And you repeat the process on from there. I'm going to go ahead and put just a couple more of these in here. I think I can go ahead and finish it out. Let's just go ahead and do that. Call it complete. All right, coming back over here. There we go. Really like that wine red with the purple. It's nice. Here we go. And we're going to use this black, which I think we don't need to actually select like a new shade of black in this particular instance. I'm going to go with just like a standard black, which is really easy to find. Which would be just zero, 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 zero. This is actually the color you can hover over and see. It's just all zeros. Now, I'm going to maybe keep this one white because we do need, this is quite a bit of saturation of color here. I'm going to make sure this is white, which is all Fs, if you use a code here. There we go. So there it is. That's my color palette. These is, this is where I can put things like patterns and visual elements that I'd like to use. I can actually go ahead and maybe grab some of those. Given these colors, I think I want to maybe find something that's modern. So I'm just going to type modern and see what I come up with in terms of graphics that I like. So I'm going to go to see all here. I'm going to go ahead and delete these two space holders. And I, let's just say, I particularly like this sort of art deco thing here. I'm going to switch the color of this, because you can't see it, into a, let me come out of here, change the color. And here we go. From this document, I can actually give it maybe this color here. I love that. That's great. And maybe this, this rose, I'll use this as well. And I'm going to go ahead again and change that to one of the colors in my kit, right? So I've got these here. That's great. I've got all of my fonts selected. I've got a couple of elements that I'm going to plan to use. I've got my colors. The next step is we can actually go in and create ourselves a really simple logo that we'll use for our site. This is one of the things that you'll need to have set up. Now, I did give a few different iterations of this that you might want to use in different instances. This first one is the one that you're going to want to use for your Git Oiling website, right? It's your first name and your last name. It's your business name. It's whatever it is that you'd like to, to use. And I like to use a combination of the fonts that you are already using. So remember, I chose Playfair Display. There we go. And the name here is Janet. And I actually think I want to use like a cursive font, which I'm not going to actually upload to my website because I'm going to use it really sparingly and typically in things like my signature. So I'm actually going to keep this Alessandra and put in this, put in the last name here and just resize it to how I want it to show up. And this, I'm going to swap out with that element that I recently selected, which is this guy here. And oh, wouldn't it be neat if that was just an extension of the Fs? I'm going to do that. All right. So we're going to take this guy down just a bit. I don't obviously have a great deal of time to fool around with this, but you could be cute like this if you want to. Certainly don't have to. And I'm going to be doing a little bit of a hack job with this today, to be perfectly fair. I'm going to go ahead and make this a bit bigger. And I'm going to center them all. Make sure there's enough white space around because you don't want, if your, if your logo is reaching the edges of this, it's going to show up a little bit weird when published on your website. All right. So I'm going to take it as large as I can. And center it. There we go. And let's add some color, right? Let's add some color from the, the palette that we chose. You can go into Canva if you have the paid Canva and use their presets for these. Let's go and grab, because we do need legibility to be a priority. I'm going to grab this deep red color because I do think that that is going to be a bit easier to read. We don't want to get too busy with the colors. There we go. So here's our red. Oh, I love it. And then we could take this red here for this rose. And change that as well. Yeah, let me just go ahead and make this one red too. Perfect. Okay. Okay. So I'm going to use this as our, as our logo. Make sure again that we've got it all centered. And I think that's pretty good. I'm actually going to go ahead and download just this image. Again, you can copy this and put it into these other places to use in different places on your website, right? This, for instance, would be a great size to use for your signature on your website. But I'm, I'm just going to download this first one here. So this is just this page. And this is a PNG file and I'm downloading it here to my computer. Okay. So we've got our logo made. Then you can go in and use some of these other templates as well. They're not absolutely necessary, right? You can do an iteration of what's here. I think putting your, putting your photo into something like this is a great idea. And then taking some of that same, here, I'm actually just going to copy this here and paste it down here. So I can make a cute little name logo for my photo, right? So I'm going to stick this down here. Maybe shrink them a bit. And I'll change the background of this circle here to be the same color. And then I can find a photo. Ideally, you've uploaded a photo of yourself. But I'm going to just find a photo of a woman smiling. And go to photos. And here we go. Right? So I'm going to shrink this up just so that it, oops, grab both of these and shrink them. Perfect. Make sure that's centered. And now I've got the name that I will have along with my photo. Now, this one, I would recommend potentially saving as transparent background if you have free Canva. That is something that you could do. I'm going to go ahead and just download this one as it is. Again, this is not, I'm not doing all of them. I'm just doing this one. I did give you more templates than you need. But as you're going through and building out your website, I think you're going to really enjoy having those sort of preset sizes, right? Now, the next thing that I want to draw your attention to are these section backgrounds. I have some that are sort of pre-made for you, and I'm going to go ahead and use these as is. But definitely feel free to go in, use the elements feature to find pictures, things like this. These are the types of things that you might scroll over on the background of a website page, right? So these are all preset for that. I'm going to go ahead and download these just for the sake of saving time. And I'm going to use these when we set up the website. Now, the final thing that you can do here is a, this is going to be a, like a custom sharing image. You know how when you put a, a link onto Facebook or even sometimes in a text message, it'll populate an image? That's what this is. So if you want a particular image for a page on your website, this is a really nice finishing touch. And you can also promote things like podcasts and things like that here if you want. So feel free to set this up for the sake of time. I'm not doing this today, but I will show you where it goes. All right. So we are more or less ready to go. So let's go over here to quick setup and get started. So I'm going to choose my profile photo and I will go and upload that one that we just created. We'll get for just a second. There we go. We'll upload that logo that we just created. And there it is there. Excellent. Select that. Now I'm going to select my headline and body text fonts. I remember that I chose Railway for this, which is a Google font. Wait a minute, seeing it Google. Let me just find a sans serif here. And I don't know why I wouldn't find that. There it is. Railway is right there. Perfect. All right. I'm using the same for my body text. This is just going to be a bit bigger and this is going to be a bit smaller, heavier, lighter, et cetera. And now, I'm actually going to drag my brand template into another, or you could do the same by this, this coolers.co. What we're going to do is click here, and we actually have an eyedropper tool. And what you're not seeing is that when I click show colors and I grab this eyedropper tool, I'm able to go over. And this first one I'm selecting is for the color of my links. Now, I do want this to stand out from the standard black color of my fonts, right? So this is important that it has some contrast, but legibility is, is also important. So click the eyedropper tool and I'm going to go over to where I have my, my brand palette that we just created. And I'm going to go ahead and click that there. So you see, now my link color is going to be this. When you hover over the link, I want it to turn red, that red from our color palette. So I'm going to do that here as well. There's that sort of deep purply red we have here. My button colors, I'm going to use that bright teal color from the palette that we built. There's that one. And I think I also would like to use that purple as my, as my secondary button color. So I'm going to grab that there, pop that in right there, and then click save and next step. So now we can select one of these different themes. We've got a few to start with. We can choose which pages we would like that are included with that particular theme. So I'm going to go over here to the Cassie theme and maybe click preview here. So you can kind of see, actually, I've got some of the same images here, what this looks like, right? So this is an example. We can also go view another theme. Maybe I would like to try this one. Let's preview this one, right? So you can actually go through and, and choose the one that you want from here. I'm going to go I'm going to go with, actually, I really like this forest, the forest one is, I think, the most popular one that people have been uh, selecting. So this is a homepage about product services and link and bio page. All of those are going to be created when we finish this next step. So we're going to briefly describe ourselves and our business and the general types of products and services we offer. Really important right here. I highly recommend that as you are talking about who you are, who you help, what you do, that we don't talk about Young Living yet. Right, so this is where I'm going to say, I am a mom of three. Who loves helping new moms get started on a wellness journey. Bringing balance. Into her life where she is normally um, running herself dry. I show her ways to incorporate. Self-care into her daily routine. With safe, healthy products. That can benefit. The whole family. And listen, you're talking to AI when you write this, so feel free to say. Do not explicitly. Mention. The Young Living brand. Or its products. Right, I'm going to say this because I believe that it's very important that we put ourselves out there first and speak to who. We want to be attracting and Young Living is part of the conversation that comes up once they're listening. Right, but what's on our website is the stuff that really hooks and helps people to get curious in the first place. Right, so I'm going to go ahead and click next step. And it's going to create website content for me. Alright, so we're going to say that I do naturally nurtured wellness, I like that. Embrace self-care and family balance with every drop. New Mom Essentials Starter Kit. Okay, um, I'm not going to go drop. Uh, because that is a little bit too oil-coated and I don't think that's going to make sense to a non-oiler. Alright, my new product or ser- my product or service name, now, we all know that we offer Young Living, right? That's not what we ultimately do when we're talking to people on our website, so I'm going to say um. I offer um. Mom's Guide to a Balanced Day, right? How about that, and all that looks like honestly, anyone could do this. Is you hop on the phone with her and you help her build a schedule and you might tell her that she should diffuse when she is performing that schedule, right? Um, it's really basic stuff. Um, when you think that you don't know enough to be able to help somebody. Uh, what you need to do is turn around and remember where you came from. And any of the things that you learned on your journey is something that you can put here and say you helped someone with because it's true, right? Okay, so um, here we go, discover a curated selection of nurturing essentials designed to support new moms on their wellness journey. And Starter Kit provides everything you need to effortlessly incorporate self-care into your daily routine. While ensuring a safe and healthful environment for your family, prioritize your wellbeing, embrace balanced life, these handpicked. Family-friendly products, this is fine, it's not talking about Young Living directly. I'm going to go ahead and go with it, I would prefer to position this more as me being a coach. As opposed to, I'm going to be telling you about products, right? So I would recommend that you spend a little time with this and position this more as you being a guide, a coach, a friend. Right, etc, so that you, it's more about your relationship than it is about you telling them what to buy, right? So this is our good oiling website that's going to be pre-populated, I'm going to put in my um, Facebook. And that's going to be. I'm just going to put in facebook.com here just to save time. Instagram. I'm going to put in my um, maybe my TikTok. Right, whatever that looks like, if you have more links that you'd like to share, you can put those here. Another great thing you can put here, if you're somebody who's building out uh, funnels. In uh, get oiling, maybe you have free offers, put links to those landing pages here, right? Um, and actually, that's what I should have done here, forgive me, because down here. Is actually where we have uh, the social media links, it actually is, we have a special place just for that, right? So here we go, I'm I'm just going to leave this here, just as is, obviously modify this to your liking. So here's your website, if you offer a free thing, put your landing page information up here. Um, if you have uh, maybe your Young Living wishlist links, tho- that's a good place to put here in this space as well. This is going to be for your link and bio page. Alright, additional options here, uh, you can choose uh, the theme fonts or the fonts that we've uploaded, I'm going to go with um. My fonts um. Or the, yeah, my fonts is the ones I just selected. Um, do you want to update your menu, if you are somebody who has been. Building a custom website with get oiling, then you might choose to not change your menu. You just want it to make the pages, right? Or only replace the menu with the pages that you have chosen, right? So these are your two options, if you are already using get oiling and building pages. Typically, if you already like your menu and you're just playing around with this feature, you're going to want to select this one right here. But since this is a new account, we're going to start here. I'm going to go create the site and say yes. And we're almost done. This is so cool, I love this feature so much. And uh, what I'll show you to, how to do is to actually go in and make modifications where you want to say something slightly different. Or you want to change the images, you can actually go and use some of the presets, look at that confetti, so cool. Um, so we can actually go view and then edit all of these different pages, let's go view my site here. From overwhelmed to harmony, mom's guide to a balanced day, start your wellness journey. Oh, I love it, this is where we can put in our freebie um, or offer a call with us. Meet the mom behind the mission. There she is. Um, I've, we've got some prompts here, obviously you want to go in and modify these so that they are accurate to your own journey. But our colors are here, look at that, the colors are here, look at all of these. Menu items are here and these are all pages that exist, right? So again, all of these going to that call to action. Um, this will take us over, um, we would want to take this over to our about page, which we can go take a look at right now. Meet the mom behind the mission, here we go. How I can help you. And I've got my story, you see how these are broken up? One sentence at a time, it draws your eye down and encourages the scroll. Right? Even a testimonial right here, so, so cool. And there's a contact link, this is a link and bio page, this is not something that people will typically see. Or care to see on a, on a desktop, but on mobile, this is going to look. Very much like you would have um, your link and bio that you would use on Instagram, etc, right? Very mobile focused, we have a services page here as well. Again, where we can learn more about the different things that we do and offer, this could be maybe where you put in calls that you offer. Um, right, like I can help you design a um, design a morning routine, here. Get on this call with me, right, or I have a PDF that shows you how to do all of these things, here's my buyer's guide. You can put all of those kinds of things on a page like this and your links. That we put in will all be right here, pretty, pretty cool. Alright, so let's talk about how we can edit this. So each of these you have an edit link for, you'll also find all of these pages in your list of pages here. Um, under your website and blog menu in get oiling, so I'm going to go edit home and I'm just going to show you how you can go in and make these modifications. To uh, background images, to text, etc. So you're just going to go to the spot where you might want to change what is being said, you see how it highlights in yellow, you just click that there. And I actually want to remove a little bit of the spacing here and add a little bit more there, I like this, this is fine. Right, maybe I want this button color to be a little different, I don't, maybe I don't really love how that is showing up uh, with the background image. I'm going to go over here and pick my primary color for that, or maybe even my secondary color for that, I do like that purple a lot. And that does look a little bit nicer with that green, right? So um, there we have that, that's great. We can obviously change a little bit of what is being said here, um, again, if you want to um. Change anything about you that's being talked about, and if you want to set this up as. A place where people can put in their name and email to receive something from you, you can go right over here under leads. And you can get your uh, lead capture form uh, image and text swapped out, change the headline. And kind of choose what happens next, are they going to book with you, are you going to uh, send them a campaign, right? So all of that is um, an option for you here. Now, what if you would like to use a different image for the background section of a page? What you're going to do is go right over here to section settings. And we're going to change the background image. Now I'm going to grab one of those ones that I created from my section backgrounds. I'm going to grab that floral one here. And upload that, and it's already ready, this particular sized image is going to be ready for you. Uh, and of course, however you created it in Canva, it's going to be ready for you to add straight onto your page. Right, so I'll give that just a minute, it's a bit of a large image. Uh, and then once it is good to go, which it is now, I can swap this out. Now, I do want to make sure once I do that, that I make some changes uh, to what you see here, because now with this text. Um, this is. Not going to work, right? So let me really quickly just go in and edit the section settings here. This background color. Uh, I believe. Uh, here it is, background color is currently black and I need to change that to white. So that I can more easily edit what's here. Right, so I'm going to select all of this text and I'm going to change it to uh, to black. So that that will show up well over the top of that image. There we go, much, much better. So um, you can go in and play around with what these look like uh, on different devices, we've got this preview feature. Um, and you see our logo right up here at the top? There it is, so cool. Uh, and when someone clicks contact, it's going to pop up that photo of you that we uploaded, it's got your contact information and everything right there. So very cool, so that is how you swap out those uh, background images. Uh, and if you create a custom sharing image for the different pages on your website. Note that under the page settings, the sharing description is going to pre-populate uh, for you. Um, and you might want to go ahead and change this, right, so here. I need to change this because I don't want those instructions to show up there. Uh, but then you can go right here and add that custom sharing image uh, if you created one and would like to use one. Right, so that's basically it, guys. You have this page created in just a few minutes. And you can then go in and you've got a starting point for all of the things that you want to do and you can just keep coming back here. And editing the different pages, swapping out what you want, making it look the way that you would like. Obviously, you want to go in and maybe change the section background color. Uh, to be something that vibes a little bit more with the colors that you've chosen and you can see that those show up here with your palette. Automatically, pretty cool, I'm going to swap this one to this color here. Just to keep everything in keeping, so here I can change uh, this image. Right, I can swap this out, in this case, I don't particularly like this, this doesn't work for me. Um, I might want to go find another photo of myself or something else that is more evocative of what I, what is being said here. I might also, just because of the size of this font, because it is quite huge. Um, I. Might choose to. Shrink this down just a little bit, in this case, I'm going to go twenty-eight and um. Just get rid of tiny bit of space in between. Just to make this something that uh, would work well on mobile, right? And we'll go take a look at what that looks like here in just a moment. Uh, go right over here to the phone preview and you can scroll through. And see exactly how that shows up, right, so that, oh my gosh, can you imagine how much bigger that other text would have looked here if I hadn't changed it? Uh, but this is great, do you see how it's one sentence at a time? But if I were to put. All of these sentences together, you would get tired of reading it before you even made it halfway through, even if it was really interesting. And it's just a psychological, let, psychological phenomenon of our eyeballs and attention spans and the internet, it's just how that works. So um, so yeah, so there it is, uh, you can uh, swap out images um. Add your um. You know, add add your lead magnets, what have you, if you guys have questions, feel free, go ahead and pop those uh, in the chat uh, or in the Q and A. And uh, I think the last page I'm going to actually go and show you how to edit is that link and bio page, which is right here. And I'll also show you how this would look on mobile. Because this is an important page, you don't need a link tree or any of those other services, if you have Instagram, TikTok, etc, you want to have. A page that uh, has your link and bio, maybe links to your website. Um, you know, has your social links, etc, on here, you can um. You can actually add more here, so if I wanted to um. Maybe select all of what's here, I could add. Another button here, so maybe I wanted to add a link to my um, Instagram. I could, you know, have some. Instagram logo and hyperlink that if I wanted to. But let me go ahead and just make that a link and I'll show you how to turn it into a button that matches the other one, we do have a training on this, by the way. Um, I'm going to actually put in the URL here, um. It's going to be instagram.com. Insert and I'm going to turn that into a button. I want my secondary color for that one, there we go. Alright, so I'm going to actually go to this element directly, I clicked this little magic wand, I'm clicking this. And the width, I want to go one hundred percent. And that is going to have it show up like this, and again, it looks kind of weird on a desktop, but when you go and you look at it on the phone. It's going to show up perfectly, you go and you look at it on um, on a tablet, it will show up perfectly as well. So yeah, that's, that's how you get started, I, it's a complete website. Um, that is ready for you to uh, you know, to go plug in everything that you want to say and share and make it your own. Now, if you guys don't have questions, um, I am going to be bringing out our friend Paula. Who has a gorgeous custom get oiling website and teaches people how to do the same. Um, yeah, Paula. How about we work on something together, how are you?
Hi, I'm doing well, and you?
Good, good. Alright, so you've been hard at work uh, creating some cool stuff, so tell us a little bit about what you are working on. Uh, just so we can get some context and then we can uh, you know, get things figured out for you.
Okay, so I've completely redone my website, I don't know if you noticed that. But um. Yeah, I offer coaching, so my main thing I'm offering is coaching. Uh, for Christian women who want to deepen their spiritual growth through prayer, devotions and aromatherapy. So um, that's, that's my homepage, you know, it's all about that and then. I have online coaching, I offer them a coaching hour. Where they can set up, I teach them how to set up their own personalized devotional routine. That's the coaching up at the top. And um, and on that page. This is a Roma of Christ coaching, I'm, I'm doing, I'm getting a photo shoot uh, next week, so I'm going to be changing my photos out soon. But um, so in this one, this is where I teach them how to uh, build their own personalized devotional routine. But I want to offer them an upsell of seven free days, seven day, a free trial in my faith building. Uh, resource club. So.
Okay, excellent, so um. We emailed about this briefly last week, there is, so on our other platform, Attract Well. We actually did a full walkthrough training of offering a free trial in a vault. And all of the automations and stuff like that that you're going to want to use to move them out of the vault if they don't purchase. But the, basically the way that that's going to look for you is, is you follow the setups that are in that training. And then what.
You can see what I've done if you'll put on the end of paulabaronz.com, if you'll put slash faith. Let's see, I'm sorry. Yeah, Faith Building Club with dashes between the words. Building. Club.
Okay.
Okay, so there it is. Um, and this is the one down at the bottom that has the uh, seven day trial. And I did follow your instructions on that video.
Excellent, okay, seven day trial. Okay. Okay. So you had mentioned uh, when you emailed me that you were interested in having this be included at the point of purchase with that um, that other offer.
Yes, that's on the other page, the coaching page, if you uh, do the pop-up on that one, I've put an upsell in there. So that they can get their free trial. But they have to go through the coaching hour, the forty-seven dollar one. To get the upsell. And this is, this is where I put the upsell, I don't know if this is the best way to do it or if there's something that would be better.
I think this is great. This is really smart, the, the way that you've put this into the uh, into the pop-up. And I, 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 I think that this is really smart because you don't want to, what you're doing on this page. Is you're selling these things, right? And you don't want to distract from these things on this page, once they've clicked this button. They're more or less ready to take advantage of what you've put right here, so when they say yes to this. They're going to go through and they're going to pick the time, uh, and then they're going to, you know, there's, this is going to be reiterated and then they're going to see, hey, you're also going to be able to get this. Right? I think that's great, um, and basically what we're doing here, okay, so here's what I would do. Right down here. Have a call to action that says, you know, if you want this, select. The coaching hour and trial membership, you know, add, you know, add the trial membership on, it doesn't cost you anything more, right?
I did put that a little bit earl- uh, before, but maybe I need, I don't, I can't remember now.
You probably did, I would just reiterate. You probably did. I would just reiterate it right next to where they need to make the choice.
So if, if you want the, the seven day free trial, then click the little bubble. What do you, what?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So um, select coaching hour and like, literally copy this. And tell them, select this if you want to have the seven day free trial. It, it seems redundant, but it, it's, it's not. It's not because a lot of people are, are, they're not going to read this in full or if they are, they're half paying attention, right? Or there's just too much distraction going on for people to read.
I put it on that little image there. So move-
Oh, got you. Okay.
Put that down right before they fill out their information.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes ma'am, I would do that. I would, I, I would have that right next to where they're choosing these two.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I have it be the last thing that, that, that they read.
Because they might have just skipped over that last image and not even read it.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. Just have it be the very last thing they see.
So what, you think I would put it in that line? It says add your information below to um, select. I don't know how. Would I put it in that last line?
I would maybe just not have this part right here in the image. And then have that be the thing that you say after the total value.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, that would, that would, that would see you having more people saying yes to this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I did follow your video to put them in the seven day free trial and then um, I have a little um, campaign that goes along with it.
Yes.
Shows them everything that's in the first month. And I, I um, I also put um, each month, there's uh, almost, I think there's eight months, but it doesn't open up, but every thirty days now. Um, so they, when they, seven day free trial, they only get the first month's information. And so I think that's what that video up above shows and what's in that first month too, right there. Yeah, up below that. That, that's actually a video. So you, you missed that. That is a video. So somehow I might need to bring their attention to that.
So what you can do here um, is maybe consider using a thumbnail that s- that tells them to press play.
Okay, okay.
You could use this same, I, I mean, I love, this is very, it, the colors are on point. You're so good with branding. Um, uh, you can, yeah, just over here utilize this space to put text to say, uh, you know, get a sneak peek of, of what you'll get, you know, sneak, press play now, something like that.
Okay, great. Yeah, yeah.
Yep, um, so good.
There were other questions I had too, but I've forgotten them.
Well, you know, you've got me if you need help with that, but um, but on the backend, you did, you set it up the way that we did in that video. That's good. Um, but yeah, I, I would really encourage, um, you know, just making a little bit of modulation here to how you're delivering the call to action. Because if you don't have it right next to where the decision is made, you're going to lose a lot of people potentially there.
Okay, great, great. Yeah, and um, on the uh, the campaign, I send them a message every day that tells them, new, new um, resources that are in that first month. And then on the last message, I put that little automation in there if they haven't joined yet to take them out.
Okay. Yes.
And I have another information. Um, if they go ahead and purchase like on the third day, then I take them out of that first campaign um, and put them in the vault. Where they go permanently. Yeah, if you look at my um, my actual uh, vault page, the, the uh, sales page for the vault, it's um, uh, there it is, that top one right there. The sales page for that. If you'll look at that and maybe give me some pointers on what I should have on that sales page, because that's where I'm, I'm sending them.
Right, to, to, to purchase the vault, right? Um, alright, so here we go. Let me scroll down here. Alright. The club is the answer.
And that's the same video, but with a different picture on the front.
Okay. Okay, so I would utilize this space here because what you're trying to do is to get somebody to commit to paying something monthly. And um, and it's really important to itemize sort of the value and the what they're getting, right? Um, and since this is a place that people are generally, I think, only going to go um, once they've been-
Yeah, only if they clicked on the button that says, I'm, I'm ready.
Right, so they're in the trial. Like, nobody's going to see this unless they're in the trial. So I would even reference, you know, you've already seen X and Y and Z and here's all the things it can do. If you stick around, you'll also get access to, right? And you can talk about more of, of, of what's going to open up and unfold for them if they stick around, uh, and really kind of dig into those benefits there. Um, and, and certainly reiterate that, you know, cancel any time, blah da da, right? Like, um, you know, you don't have to commit to ever, for, forever, but you know, you can, you can get started with this and here's all the value you're going to get. So I would treat this a, just a little bit more like a proper sales page and, and really kind of beefing up the um, the adding up of what they're getting.
Okay, if you'll scroll up and go to the actual page and look at it, I've actually got two offers on there. One, they get a free, a month free if they sign up for a year right at the checkout page.
Oh, oh yeah, this is it here. Yeah, I was um, I'm going to have to open that in a new uh, window probably. Or actually, no, you know what I, I can probably do here.
Oh, there it is. Yay. See, I've got two payment options there. They get um, the Faith Building Club for twenty-seven dollars a month or they get one month free if they sign up for a year. I didn't even know I could do that, but I think I have it set up right.
I think, I mean, it, it looks correct. If we look at this one month free, um, two ninety-seven every year. You've basically, you know, you've, you've calculated that one month free is they will pay two ninety-seven. Um, and that is um, yeah, let's look at that real quick. Yeah, two ninety-seven every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's going to keep them in there and then um, in the eleventh month, they'll get a little notice, I guess, two or three days early from Stripe that'll say, hey, it's going to renew and it'll go ahead and renew unless they cancel it.
Yeah, yeah. And I would consider uh, for that particular type of membership, uh, consider having a campaign. You know, but it, it would be just like you would have a welcome campaign uh, for someone who has just gotten started on a subscription. You would have um, you would have one for a monthly and you want to make sure that you're really engaging month to month generally anyway. But for someone who is um, who is on an annual, um, you might consider um, having some kind of message that a campaign sends uh, before they renew. So maybe, you know, if it's a three hundred and sixty-five campaign, day campaign, then you know, three hundred and thirty-four days uh, into the campaign, uh, maybe we want to send, you know, an invitation, you know, for a quick check-in or something like that, right? Uh, because it, it is um, it is easier to lose people who do annual, right? Because they um, they aren't thinking about the fact that they're getting charged, right? It's not top of mind for them. And so they'll be more surprised, especially if they aren't active in the group. Uh, they'll, they'll be more likely to uh, to be like, oh, well, what's that? I am not using it. I'm, you know, going to let it go.
Yeah.
So um, so yeah, I, I would maybe uh, use an automation to apply an additional campaign there for that purpose.
Okay, and then I would, would I put that on the um, whenever the, the uh, what, the payment, the payment thing, you know, there's little boxes. Do I put that extra campaign there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would attach the um, yeah, you would, you would want to, because that's a unique circumstance that's only for people who choose this purchase option. So I would use an automation to attach that here.
When we click on that, there's a place for an automation there. Okay, and that's where I would put that extra campaign to, you know, tell them a few days before, a week or so before that is going to renew and remind them of all the value that's in there. And then they'll also be getting the regular, I send out uh, for everybody that's on the twenty-seven dollar monthly thing, they get an email once a month. So that year, annual one would also get the monthly notifications and then they'd get that extra one, maybe extra couple.
That's right, yeah.
And that's where I would put it, is in there.
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
This is so cool, Paula. You're really doing some cool stuff.
Yeah, it's all connected in with my podcast now. So podcasting is my main thing and then brings them to the webpage for the coaching.
Excellent. Oh, God, it's so cool. It is so cool to see like this journey of yours over time here, just making so much good use of the system and everything that it can do. Do you have any other questions before we get going?
No, I think that's it. I love, I love the new feature with that really fast webpage creating thing. Oh my gosh, I wish I had had that in the beginning.
You and me both.
Was getting one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's um, it's so cool. I hope you guys play around with it, you know, whether you've got a website or not, remember that uh, that setting where you don't want to, you know, don't change my menu, just make me some pages. Be sure to select that if you already have a bunch of great uh, website pages like Paula here does. Uh, by the way, um, if you guys have not yet, uh, Paula is actually listed on our um, on, on our Get Oiling Partners page. She has a course that she teaches. Um, please check out her website, y'all. Paula Barrens dot com. Um, just awesome, beautiful website. She does such incredible work and is such, just I think a perfect example of what it looks like to just make the most of everything you can do with a Get Oiling account. And the beautiful thing is, is that she oils like you do and she can help you improve your business uh, because that's what she does here. So um, yeah, Paula, thank you for being a light in this community and uh, for, you know, being a light in the world, doing what you do. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alright, y'all. Let me uh, pop out of the share here. Thank you all for spending this time with us here today. We'll be back same time next week. I hope you play around with this feature, use those Canva templates. Remember, they are on the blog post uh, that you'll find. Uh, and the replay uh, for this will be there as well. So uh, get started with that. Uh, let's start leveling up our branding on our personal websites and uh, we will catch you back here same time next week. Uh, till then, have a great week, everybody.